Seven o'clock, we're gonna start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna open the public hearing. We consider a proposed ordinance to include regulations governing temporary farm housing. Full proposal advertised in the second time and available both on the town website and in the town clerk's office. It's also a notation, receive public comments and receive comments from the planning board.
So. You want the public to start or you want?
I think we, I think we can start, we have Andrew who's not here tonight and Gary spearheaded this. Um, so Gary by default. Like to start.
Sure.
Okay.
So this was brought about by some of the farmers that having problems with workers. Nobody in town wants to be a farmer. I have the same problem with fishermen. You know, nobody wants to be a fisherman anymore. So you have to have people come from out of town. So the farmers had come a few years ago and asked to get temporary housing for their workers. So the workers could come in, stay in the housing five days a week, then go home to their family. So they went to the planning boards, sat there for two years, nothing was done on it that I saw it or nothing came back to the council. The farmers came back to us again this year and say, hey, what's up? Let's get something going here. So Andrew and I put together a package. The planning board thought that it should go to them, so they held a special council meeting, a special meeting on Monday, April 21st. They brought some proposals back that they thought should be incorporated into it. And um, there's only one that I have a question with all the rest of them. I don't have a problem if they want to be incorporated into the original document that Andrew and I came up with. There was legally used by the solicitor, that's fine. But one that I have a problem with, some of these structures were built before zoning. So what this one says is temporary structures shall adhere to property side setbacks of less than 25 feet and be located behind the real line of any current house. So if that current house is 10 feet from a property line, how are they gonna put these temporary structures there? Does that mean they can't have them? This is a way that saying, okay, well, I really don't want them. So we're gonna put this in. So if there's not enough room behind the house, then they can't have them. So I have a problem with that one. That's the only one I have a problem with. Maybe the planning board chair can explain that.
Any other comments from the council?
No.
No.
I'll open the uh, public input. Uh, I will say we have a very packed agenda tonight. We all don't want to be here forever. Um, so there'll be a three minute uh, time limit for when you go up. I'll keep that. And when I interrupt you, please don't get mad at me. I am the messenger. Just finish uh, your sentence or your paragraph and we'll have to let the next person speak. So if anyone would like to speak uh, on the hearing about this, now would be the time.
I'd just like uh, some clarification on uh, no, uh, letter F, temporary structures.
That's the solicitor for that, Gary?
No, I was asking the planning board, do you see his recommendations, planning board chairs having to?
Okay. Well, so when you go up to speak, just go to the podium, just say your name, so everyone home can hear you.
So the, the um, item uh, F, uh, which says, which what the recommendation uh, addition was the temporary structure shall adhere to the property side yard setbacks of not less than 25 feet and be located in the rear line of any current structure. So that was um, recommended by uh, the, the planning board. So that the temporary structure, which from a discussion standpoint has been utilization of RVs and whatnot, would not be in the front yard setback of the house. And, and Ben and Skip were there and that seemed to be reasonable and okay. That's, that's where we landed with that.
Okay, well, as I say, maybe we can put uh, 25 feet be located behind the rear line of any current house if possible.
Fine.
So you want to add that to it, solicitor, if possible on F?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so then I'll make it, I'll make a motion if I get a second, then we can bring it up to public discussion. I'll make a motion that we adopt this ordinance. Uh, and add planning boards, recommendations. And on F, add any current house if possible.
On your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that, Gary.
All right, we're in discussion. Any other comment from the public? Yes, Carter?
Carter Wilkie, member of the planning board. As I understand, this has been in the works for, for a couple of years. I just joined the planning board this year. I just wanted to point out that this deals strictly with, with temporary housing, housing for farm labor. It doesn't address permanent farm housing. And there's a couple of other things I think the town could do and we should look into doing. Uh, the, the most affordable, attainable way to create permanent farm housing for a new farm family is to allow them to create a unit on the upstairs of a barn on the second floor. The first floor could be workspace, production space, similar to what you had today at Wishing Stone Farm, where you have the farm store on the first floor, housing above. My property, I've got a 200-year-old stone barn. We have an affordable apartment on the second floor. I've got all my equipment on the first floor. Those are older structures that grandfathered in under our 1968 adopted suburban zoning code. It is illegal to do that and have multiple uses under one roof. So that's one thing we should change and look at so that we could have uh, ways for young farm families to be able to afford to live here. The second way is the agricultural conservancy trust is empowered to spend its resources to acquire real property to keep land in agricultural use. Under Rhode Island law, real property is defined not just as land, but as any permanent structures that stay fixed to the property after a sale. So that means the egg trust is empowered to build or buy properties that have housing on them that could be used to house farmers to keep the land in agricultural use. Those are two things that our town could do that would give us ways to have permanent farmer housing. And I think those should be looked at also. Thank you.
Carter, I couldn't agree with you more. And you know that I've been singing that song for a while. But now maybe you're on the planning board, you can bring that to fruition. I'm trying, please. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You go. Go ahead. Uh, Ben Wallback, 85, we all have, uh, in a 28 old farm road. I run Skinny Depp Farm and I just want to thank you for your consideration of this bill or this uh, ordinance. It really would help us out. And I, I especially appreciate that I was written with quite a bit of leeway in terms of what, what the housing can look like. So I just wanted to offer my gratitude. On the fantasy 1600 farm road. Um, after reading this document, I have a lot of questions. There's, there is no question that what we've all been talking about, that farmers need help there. Myself being a farmer, whole, my whole life in Portsmouth and so on, so I, you know, raised chickens when I was young. I had a Christmas tree farm in town. I know these farmers need help. However, you're asking for temporary dwellings. You list them as to not limited to yurts, mobile units, recreational vehicles, tiny homes and trailers. Kind of a loosey-goosey definition of people are gonna put in their yard. I mean, the last person that spoke, sounds like there's a real good deal there because they have a barn. But yeah, all these different vehicles, a lot of the places have a standard unit. For example, in Providence for the homeless, we saw this, there was those little square boxes, they were all the same. Kind of neat, took a long time to get them going, but I envision, you know, somebody could have their uncle March trailer that he takes to the uh, to the fair every year up in Maine. Somebody else has got something else. I didn't see in this document where there was any list of the things that these units have to have. So H2A housing has some suggestions, although that's not, is not H2A housing. Some of the suggestions are, you know, where the water pipe would go, how many people could live in there, how close they should be to each other. Fans, other fans, fire regulations. You might say, okay, we have people in town that they don't, you know, watch all that stuff. However, I don't, I don't see the list that says this is what the building official or the farm police are gonna do. So because of that, there's just so many things that are missing. And the fact that you could be setting a precedent here, I would suggest tonight that your table is until such time that you can come back with a, a plan that encompasses all, all these things. You can't just say it's a, a, a temporary house and then not define it. We've had houses and then a barn, and then there's your farm. And then we had the uh, two-year zoning law, still a house, barn, a farm. Now you've got the house, the barn, a bunch of vehicles all over the place that don't look like. And who polices that? You're suggesting the building official, but I don't see the guide lists or the kid all look at it and say, wow, look at that. Yeah, this is what this person's gonna enforce. Certainly do not want to slow the process down. Farmers like Mr. Matt Rowan said at the last meeting, they need to go right away, get going. Yeah, but not in the process of going, lose sight of what you're putting on your land.
In uh, section 4C, all structures must comply with all applicable state and local health and safety codes.
That's true, but there's no description of what these units are gonna look like. There'll, there'll be one trailer here, one yurt over there.
The uh, planning board uh, recommended, it has been already adopted by amendment, that there be only two temporary units.
That still doesn't answer the question. They can be a temporary unit because they still look like a finished trailer that goes to the Friday fair.
Well, Benny had a good trailer, but it also has to comply with building code and health and safety too. That's actually a situation.
There are a lot of precedents here. I suggest you table it.
Anyone else from the audience? I see a head, go right up, sir.
Hi, um, thank you for.
Speak up, please, really loud.
Okay, my name is Skip Paul from Wishing Stone Farm.
Thank you.
I run the largest organic farm in Rhode Island, farm about 52 acres around town. We get some land from the land trust. We own some land and I get lots of land given to me by landowners that want a land taken care of. Um, Gary and I have been discussing the problems with labor. Anybody that has an ear to the con, the economy and from restaurants to anything, trying to find labor has gotten very bad. And since farm labor is probably, unfortunately, it's probably the lowest common denominator in the labor market. It's very difficult for us to find established workers that will stay at a farm. Our biggest problem is we, uh, we, we put hundreds of thousands of dollars in building a, a farm and a, you know, something to harvest. And all of a sudden, in the middle of July, some kids says, oh, my father wants me to go on vacation. I'm sorry, two of us are leaving. And now you're stuck with this income and you can't even get it out of the field to harvest it. So one of the solutions that's going on across New England and different states are working with the same problem is you've got to give uh, some housing to farmers uh, to be able to get a solid labor force that will help you actually get, stay with you during a critical time period to get up, get the farm to continue works itself. What we're trying to do here is not, one of the things, one of the safety switches we try to put into this is we're only looking for nine months. I'm not trying to make a housing that's gonna morph into a, oh, I bring my girlfriend, my daughter wants to get in. Now this is just for workers, paid worker. They're gonna be certified as a farm paid worker because their taxes that you're paying for farm work is gonna be certified that they're working at a farm. They're not a dog keeper or babysitter. These are workers at a farm. And we're, one of the things we've been trying to work on is to get something like a, a two or three uh, room Winnebago that has a septic system that can hold five or six days worth of septic. And then we'll have a guy come start it out. So we're not trying to plant some little ramshack place if we don't know where the, the septic system is going. These, we've worked with the building code, we're working with the building aspect to make the, sure the electricity is brought there. It's not some line 150-foot piece of, you know, extension cord. We're gonna get it, you know, we're gonna make this thing work. And the biggest other safety switch, this is just a temporary, if this doesn't work out, everybody thinks, my God, this is not working out. Then in three years, we can dissolve, make it go away. But it's gotta give us a chance to make it work. And um, the amount of farm, let's put it this way, in Connecticut in 1955, there were 350 dairy farms. There's three dairy farms in Connecticut. And that's the nature of agriculture in New England. Everything's been gobbled up into houses. And this is quite frankly, one of your last chance, keep farming in a little cop. There's only three of us that are working farms. You know, you know, Pete Peckham, I don't know if he's gonna continue farming when he goes away. You know, farming is at a, is at an edge here. And this is where we're gonna try to save it. And I'll be glad to talk to any, any other, I wanna thank you too long, but thank you.
Thank you. Give me a, I'll give you a bite at the end. One more, it's gotta be a minute though, but I just wanted to, so, so what the, uh, the gentleman brought up is a in the uh, planning board's additions, it's a five-year set on the proposed events. Uh, allowing farmers to do adequately, try the ordinance as well as giving the town council an opportunity to review and make edits to the ordinance. Uh, you mentioned three years. Is that something that uh?
Five years would be better, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. There's five years ahead, mentioned three years. Was there any discussion, solicitor, Gary or Andrew about a lesser amount than seven years, three years adequate?
Well.
I'll get to everybody. I'm gonna go one, everyone break.
If you remember four or five years ago, when there was loud music at the kind of vineyard, but I came up with an entertainment license. So we thought of everything, found out we didn't. So after two of their events, we brought it back to the table and we tightened it up a little bit. So I'm assuming this can be the same thing with this ordinance. If it doesn't work out, if there's people out there that are abusing it, we bring it back to the council and it doesn't have to be six months. It can be in two months. It can be in one month. If we say, see somebody bending the rules like they should. Uh, the building official comes and talks to us and says, hey, this guy's not playing by the rules. Then it comes back to the council, we see what he's done, what he's done wrong, and then it goes to the solicitor. So there is stop measures in here if it isn't handled correctly.
All right, that's up to you. I'm gonna give you a bite at the apple, a minute. You gotta go up there. No, you don't have to go up. Just talk about it.
Yeah. It answers the question. And that is if the workers are temporary, it's the housing units themselves that they separated. They get removed during the end of the period that they stay there. So my objection is you got a pabri of, of buildings and trailers and everything else. The workers go home, but then you still have.
So let's see, I bet you next, I got you next, not yet. Let's cancel to the pop for you trailers, listener, Garrett. They get moved, they get out of there, they stay forever? They have to be removed. Gotta go. That's the base that is um, in the definition of the ordinance. Hey, you're up.
I'm Sal Marinosi. I'm also on the planning board. There were extensive discussions about protection, the rest of the residents in, in the town in considering this. Very, we were very careful about saying that the building official has the authority to inspect, to stop. And that is, that's the crux of it. The building official goes there and you find something he doesn't like, doesn't have to approve it. He finds something that's not correct, he cites them. And they can't utilize it if they're cited. So it's gonna be done, it's gonna be done under the, the, the building code. I questioned about the electric, we got that squared away. It's gonna meet all electrical uh, codes. And, and it's not just gonna be a wire on top of the ground. It's gonna, it's gonna have to have a service, et cetera. Most of the time, we, we own a farm. My family owns a farm in East Greenwich, a horse farm, 65 acres. And we have people on the farm. It's a problem for them. We don't have temporary housing for them, but it is a problem. And this is a way of getting a temporary unit in, probably a trailer, maybe an RV, whatever it is. But there's only gonna be two of them. They, they either have to remove it or cover it.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Hi.
Come on up. You have to come, you have to come up to the podium so people on the live stream can hear. Sorry.
I just have a question. Hi, everybody.
Hey.
Brenda McKee from Wild Cherry Drive. Um, I don't understand, people who have at least two acres and can go 25 feet back from their property can put these structures on their land. Is, they have to have a minimum of two acres? So who's gonna do this?
So who's gonna answer that?
Anybody who wants to?
Uh, the uh, um, planning board added a definition that you have to at least have $10,000 of income from farm, uh, farm, farming income. That's the first thing. Second thing is is.
Of the person who's gonna live on the property.
In order, that's from the farm itself.
Oh, that's.
In order to avail yourself of this um, you know, this temporary housing, you're gonna have to earn a certified payroll, the workers that are living here.
No, it's true.
It's not something that anybody can do. You can ask, you have to have employees that you pay. And you're gonna have to certify that and hand the payrolls to the building official. Thank you. Any other hands? I don't see any other hands. Nice music going.
Excuse me, uh, before you vote on this, uh, I had a late um, communication from Chief Petron. He asked if, uh, when the building official does the inspections, that the fire marshal do so also. If that's something that you find acceptable, that would go in section 4A after building official. The language would be with inspection by fire marshal.
I think that's a great idea.
Want to amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion to include uh, inspection by fire marshal.
Okay. And I had a second.
A second amended motion?
Any other? Home favor?
Hi.
Any votes? Not seeing anything.
So this goes into effect as a fine passage.
Correct, yes. I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you for everyone. Are there any announcements, announcements, anyone? I'm seeing a, approval minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the last town council meeting.
Uh, second?
Second.
Home favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, department head reports, I had some good news. Report from town administrator on the road paving project schedule. This is a local one. I just want to be the first one to say, there'll be no new signage on the Everybody will enjoy that. I got to stay in it, so.
It's not on John Dyer Road.
No, nah, read my lips. No new signage. I'll hand it off to the administrator.
Although there will be some temporary signage to alert the residents that constructions placed.
News of signs.
Your road closing, closure. Uh, so both of those will be temporary, not permanent signage. Um, that being said, five roads will be done. Uh, the uh, project will start May 5th. Um, and there is different phases to it. Uh, the first phase will be John Sisson, Tillis Lane and Town Way. And they'll be done between May 5th and May 21st. The second phase will be Emmy Hartpath, and that's only from Coal Brook to the transfer station. Uh, that piece will be done, followed by John Dyer Road. They'll be the last of the uh, of the projects or the, the roads to be paved uh, due to the fact that we have a culvert work to be done there. And it's gonna require a road closure there for at least five days to do the culvert. Uh, enough signage will be placed around to make sure people are aware of that's taking place. And beta engineering will inform all the residents in all of the roads uh, when construction is taking place. Uh, so you'll be informed by beta engineering. Uh, as to the transfer station, we may need to close it for three days. However, we're trying to work that, we're incorporating the Wednesday because it's already closed on Wednesdays. You know, so the likelihood could be a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Uh, we're not quite sure yet. We'll be working with a construction company um, as to when that will take place. However, notify the residents way in advance so they, you'll have proper notice.
Just to uh, highlight, John Dyer Road on the south end, we'll be having a new culvert and that'll be shut down for five days. That'll be in June, probably the third week in June?
Uh, it will be towards the end of uh, yes, that's correct.
And the dump will be closed, I would imagine, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday or
Oh, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday. I would not take Monday, but.
Right.
Oh, Monday, Thursday.
So we would like to not, not close, keep it open on Monday following the weekend. Uh, either do a Wednesday, I mean, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, or Wednesday, Thursday and Friday.
Motion to place on file.
Second? Home favor?
Hi.
Hi. Yeah. Report from the town administrator regarding the wastewater facility needs.
Uh, the, to that point, and when we say wastewater facility, we're talking about the leach field um, that contain, you know, receives all the uh, um, well, I'm not gonna say sewage, but the, the water, you know, the discharge uh, from all the buildings. They go to the, the leach field right out, the out, the spill field. Um, with that, we've had some issues that we need to address. There is a panel that has not been functional um, that controls all the pumps in the field. Uh, so we are replacing that, that panel at a cost of 15,000 and change. Um, we've already put down a deposit of $8,000, who's approved by the council previously. Uh, we need to make a final payment on that and purchase two pumps which needed as well, you know, to uh, to keep the flow of the discharge.
Yeah. So what he's talking about, the wastewater, it's a 22-year-old facility. You could all feel old about that, but it's been there that long. Um, do I put this on file, Gary?
Yes, no, we gotta, we gotta.
We're gonna go some money here, huh?
Yes. I'll make the motion that the council approve $7,903, the balance of the 15,903 that's due. And $4,796 for the purchase of two pumps.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Home favor?
Um.
All right, you opposed? Thank you. Okay, hold this. Received communication from the Commons Review Committee regarding thirty and thirty-two commons. I'd like to thank the committee for their time and their diligence in bringing their recommendations to the council. Thank the seven members, Gary Mataronis, Randy Watt, Bob Booth, Amy Mooney, Travis Audi, Leslie Fox, and the Chair, Aris Serandans, I wanna thank you for taking your time away from your family and your friends and doing that for us. So folks, we have a document that was given to us, uh, from the committee, you can get it at Town Hall, might be able to get it today, it'll be on online. Um, I'm gonna read a report, it's a short preamble, I guess you wanna call it, and then there's four recommendations. And, uh, my plan is to read each recommendation, discuss it among the other counselors, and then if anyone else has a comment on it, then comment, then we'll go to the second one, the third one, the fourth one. That's my plan. So this is their preamble. After capital review of all inputs, specifically reviewing existing agreements with the Oddfellows and the Grange, reviewing current unmet needs and a nearly unanimous town residents opinion. We recommend the following, vast majority of residents in letters and public hearings all pines to resent voting against or amend Strokes four and five from the town's financial meeting ballot. Almost unanimously, residents are in favor of a community-led planning phase that incorporates following. So the following is four recommendations, I'll do the first one, I'll read the first one. The committee recommends that town council develop a short-term plan to address fire safety code, board appeal review with the requirements to address the immediate needs of thirty-two commons, fire safety needs to avoid the buildings being declared unusable or vacant. So that's a great, um, recommendation. I had been to the fire board, um, and a very serious fire people up there. And I went, uh, with the community center, um, to ask for a variance, which, um, we, uh, got to six months. We have to go back to the fire board on the Oddfellows June fourth, because we have a six-month variance coming up then with a plan. The town's hired a consultant, Ray Gomes, uh, who's an expert, he's done a lot of work, uh, with getting us crafted, he goes to the fire board. Um, so we have our fire plan. Uh, the council has voted, um, to charge up to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for sprinkles for both buildings. Uh, we've hired Pat Drum to do that design for ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, so that's part of our. Um, so, do you have anything to add to that? Anyone on the council?
No, that's the key that we have been instructed must be complied with in order to, I think that's the right.
Okay, so that's recommendation, recommendation one. Recommendation two, the town to issue an RFP to hire a planner to engage in judging with the committee appointed with key stakeholders and others as need necessary. So another great recommendation that we put a stakeholder committee together. Um, presently, the town has hired a planner, her name's Allison Ring, for forty-two thousand dollars. And she is advising the planning board now on the state's new regulations came a year or so ago. Um, she does do showroom in Block Island, if I'm not mistaken. And, um, so that would be someone the town could hire, Allison, um, but obviously that costs money. And I got a feeling it's probably gonna be more than forty-two thousand dollars to hire Allison, uh, to do these things, that's just my guess.
So.
Anyway.
Allison Ring does a good job, biometric-wise. And coming up with ordinance for the planning board, but I'm not sure she would be the one to do, the planner to, to do this for those two buildings, I think we need somebody to come in that has knowledge of municipal buildings, how they're gonna be used, come back to the council and all the committee. It's a committee that will be somebody from the, maybe the Oddfellows, somebody from the community center because one of the things we found out is that General Citusry wants a combination of the Oddfellows and the community center to be combined somehow, maybe with a uh, enclosed building, so that they can expand their senior lunches because sign up room in there, that would also, they could relieve some of the burden of the small kitchen, make a bigger kitchen, we could definitely um, service more of us seniors, because I understand that some of the seniors right now because the building's so small, well, I don't think it's small, but it, there's not enough room for everybody to get a meal, so. That was happened, there was thoughts that if we made that all the way between the community center and Oddfellows, it could be two stories, and then we could have uh, office space on the top one for somebody like the senior, senior citizen director, um, and maybe more room for the community center staff, so they could open where their offices are to make a bigger kitchen. So I think we need somebody that can is just planning municipal buildings, somehow come up with a, um, conceptual plan for us to look at, send it to the residents of the town, to the council, let them all look at it, say, hey, you know, this is pretty good, I know this isn't gonna work, we think we should do this, just like the committee did with the fact binding, um, yeah, C I C, the committee that came up with this program. So I think that's my thrust.
Okay.
I'd like to, to say that I think that's, that's a great idea, to get professionals involved, whether they're consultants or, and/or architects and/or engineers, I think all of the above is probably gonna be required before anything can happen over there. Um, and I think the first order of business is obviously putting together a committee of stakeholders, and I would like to add the makers to that because when I reviewed, reviewed the usage of, um, number thirty-two, they were using it more than anybody else. And I, I don't think they've had much of a voice in this last committee, and I think it's important that they have a voice in the next one. Um, so yeah, I absolutely think that's job number one, whether, um, the articles pass or not. So if, if say, the second article passes and we go to bond, the first thing we would need to do, in my opinion, would be to form that committee. And if the bond passes, then we have money to hire, uh, an architect, a consultant, an engineer, and kind of get the ball rolling. My personal fear is that if we don't pass the bond or something like that, we don't have the funds and this thing drags out. And I think the seniors have been waiting a long time, I think the second floor for Oddfellows has been closed for a long time. And I wanna see this thing get, get some momentum, so that's my personal opinion, but I agree with the, with the idea of hiring professionals, because we definitely need them.
I think one of the thing that was brought to light to the committee was if we involve the senior center or the community center, we can get grants and funding through them, or they can get grants and funding, the Oddfellows is a historic building. We were told that there is quite a few historic, uh, facilities out there do give grants, so one way or the other, one, one thing I wanna ask is, listen, if this bond is approved, do we have to go forward with this bond right away? Because I can't see.
I could answer that, I spoke with some finance people, they said we're probably gonna have to bond sometime December.
Okay, but how, how soon do we have to actually utilize that? Because I think what we need to do is get a conceptual plan and get that everybody in agreement with what's gonna happen down there, and then get to the nuts and bolts of it with somebody that does that kind of, you know, an architect or somebody that can put something together from that conceptual design, and then start getting some figures for it. And I don't wanna have, okay, we're gonna use the bond, we're gonna get the bond in January, but it's gonna be another six months before we're gonna have a, a plan together.
So, so that's governed by a bond covenant?
Okay.
My experience with these types of bonds is you have considerable leeway in terms of when these projects start.
Right, okay, so if the bond was passed, you anticipate we would probably have a year or so before we would actually have to apply for it, or we would apply for it um, soon, and then say, well, we need a year before, and let us put some, a package together, how we're gonna use it?
The, the court is, uh, you know, the approvals of the bond, then you can go and have the bond closing. Then after that, once the bond is, is set, because you have the purpose from, from your vote, you have time to utilize the bond funds.
Hmm. Okay.
You have questions on that one, on that recommend, Aron, you have a recommend, uh, comment on it, come on up.
My name is Aron Seranians, I chaired the committee we're talking about. Regarding funding, uh, there are opportunities in town to minimize the impact on tax and our contribution to this project. Uh, there are significant philanthropists in town who with their verbally have reported, they will make significant contributions in a matching program. And as Gary mentioned, with the Oddfellows and Grange, there are opportunities for grants between those two. This is being recorded, so I'm gonna pay for this, it is possible up to eighty percent of the expenses may be covered. So to go to get a bond may be premature at this moment, because that's a question, actually I have a question for Solis, can you return that money back? The bond money?
It is actually statutory. Okay. You have the bond, it's been approved, no money's been expended, after a certain amount of time, the bond can be canceled with no effect on the town, I can't give you the citation without my head, but I know what's there.
So between the philanthropists and the grants, I think, this is what I think, and the committee, we discussed it, it's in, if you get a chance, look at number five, the process, form a committee that looks at this with the aid of a planner of some sort, whatever that planner is. Based on that conceptual development, philanthropists will step in and monies will be raised. Between Oddfellows and Grange, you'll raise more money. Then whatever the difference is, things will happen parallel simultaneously between development and applying for grants. And then you apply for a special financial meeting to make up the difference. That way, the burden on the town and taxpayer will be minimal. But that's what I wanted to add to your comment.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments?
Again, Sal Marinosi from Oliver Lane. I did a conceptual drawing for the old fire station. And the reason I did the drawing, I wanted to show certain people in the town. We have a unique situation here where we have four buildings owned by the town in a row, omnichomics, quite unique. We're the only commons in the state of Rhode Island. Now, Bristol claims one, but it's not really a commons. If you look at it, it's a piece of land behind a building.
Doc, can you address the committee, please? Can you address those?
Thank you. Well, I, there's somebody with a head over here and I can't see you, so it's. Where do you go? Anyway.
Relax. I give it, you guys, let's keep it.
I, I know you wanna do this quick, but this is important.
No, no, I don't wanna do it, I, I just want everybody to get a chance.
This is, I see these four buildings, I see these four buildings as a campus, not an individual use, a campus of multi-uses. I, I see us planning this so that the seniors are taken care of. Uh, the community center can utilize portions that the seniors are doing. And if it's done correctly and carefully, the property would be improved fullfold. We have the ability to have some parking behind the stone wall there. We have two places for a rest to the back of the stone wall. The front building, the old fire station, is that great, ideal for seniors? We could utilize that portion of the building. That the large portion of the building has a meeting hall for the seniors, there could be tables in there, you could have an outside patio for them. You also have restrooms and a kitchen downstairs in the odd disposal, that could be incorporated into something that the community center needs when they're working outside. And then tie it all in, now you could tie it all in physically with a structure, with a walkway that's covered to the weather, or you could just tie it in with a path, with one wall, one blind wall. But for us to just rush into this thing so fast, really aggravates me. I built for sixty-five years, all right, I did the boys' club in Pawtucket, I've built a number of buildings in downtown Boston. This is what I've done for a living. I see these buildings and I see so much that this town could have. I don't wanna see us rush into something and destroy our heritage.
All right, if I.
It's just sitting there, the four buildings are significant.
Thank you, so I just, you know, with rushing, um, and I find it odd that, you know, there's buildings that were sitting there for decades, we haven't rushed to do anything. Um, so I've been on the committee almost four years now.
No, I, I didn't say you rush now, I, I'm saying I don't wanna rush.
Okay, I'll get there, and, um, you know, we knew the, you know, when I get on the, on the council, I knew that the buildings are sorry shape. And, uh, so, you know, we years we thought about it, it wasn't during, then we got the majority. And, um, this, this council spent sixteen, seventeen works and worked really hard, and spent a lot of hours, um, the time away from our family, our friends, uh, and it really put a lot of work into bringing this to light and, and giving, uh, a couple of, um, options, one that's not on the taxpayers' back, and the other one that is on the taxpayers' back. So there was no rush with these, we did these assessments, we did a, a lot of work.
I didn't say you rushed, I said I don't wanna see us rush into something, and, and.
Thank you, thank you. Do you wanna comment on it?
Well, I, I would like to agree that I think the big picture is what we all wanna look at here. And that, that was sort of the genesis of this in the early stages, back to when I first came on the council in December, and we got the report from the fire department and they closed the second floor, and we were discussing building a new set of stairs up front. And that grew into the, uh, council conversation about looking at this in a bigger picture. And so that's where that work has come from, was that concept of like, let's look at the bigger picture. And, and since December, we've had lots of conversations with lots of people, as you know, including the community center and Amy Mooney specifically, and heard, um, very clearly the needs that they have for more space. And I think there's an excellent opportunity here for, if the town has some buy-in and we have some skin in the game, Amy has talked about the community center's potential having a capital fundraising campaign, and I agree with the idea of grant writing, whether that's a hired grant writer or, or not. There certainly are grant opportunities for historical buildings, for senior centers, for all kinds of, all kinds of stuff here. So I think there's a lot of opportunity, and I agree that the big picture is what we should be looking at. Again, I just come from the place with, let's get some money so we can hire some people, whether that's a grant writer or a consultant or an architect. Let's see the community center do some work on their behalf, let's see our, as, as, um, Aron noted, our generous, um, folks in the community who've already, many of them have offered to contribute, I think we have the possibility to do something awesome. And, and I think we don't know what the it is yet, and there's a lot of work to be done to get there. So I think a lot of us are sometimes sounding like we're talking past each other, but we're kind of saying the same thing. I think we need to look at it in the big picture way, I think money helps because you can hire professionals. We've been looking at it since December with feasibility studies and a capital needs assessment, lots of interviews and lots of conversations. And now we're moving into the next part where we're looking at putting this on the financial town meeting, and if we could get some funds, then we can move it down, down the road, and I don't think, um, we are rushing at all, I think we're moving, we're doing two things at once and trying to keep, keep it going, so I, I'm looking forward to the possibilities of what we can do.
Thank you, so I'm gonna move on. I don't know how to spell your last name or say it, you know that.
Donna Pelkington.
It's not easy for some people. Right up.
And I've never, I never have been to town council meetings, and I've never spoken before this, but I am aggravated because we are continuing to talk about this person's plan for these buildings, that person's. because we are continuing to talk about this person's plan for these buildings, that person's plan. I, you can poll all the people here and come up with two hundred plans. But we're on question number two on this wonderful report, the Talks for RFPs, requests for proposals. And that's what I think we need to do rather than send it out to this. Um, I, I don't even know your name, but the, but this man said, I don't know if she's the right person. Well, I don't know if that one's the right person. You know, put some good heads together here and come up with, um, people to send out an RFP to do a comprehensive plan for all this money that we want to spend, that we know we will get to spend. And as far as financing this study, um, there are, there's a huge foundation in this state that has a rolling, um, admission, uh, you, for, uh, projects like this, for planning projects that this would probably certainly qualify for. You get a nonprofit and there's the community center, there's the Oddfellows, get them all. I mean, the, um, the foundations in this state would love this collaborative kind of process. So I, I really feel like you say, don't spend money of this bond money or don't stay, spend our taxpayers' money on doing this. Get non, get the nonprofits to apply to get this RFP by, um, or by a competent person.
Thank, thank you, Donna. That's a good segue into recommendation number three. Move on. Everybody caught that from new, unless somebody wants to talk about two. Are you talking about two? Planner? About to stay on our recommendations here.
So, um. Well, I'll, I'll be plenty loud, don't worry. So, yeah. So at any rate, uh, I was gonna speak later, um, but now I feel that I need to speak now. Uh, you know, Chairman, you, you just spoke about how, um, best at a lot of time away from your families and whatnot, coming up with two options, um, that are going to be put forth at a financial town meeting. You know, I, I have stood here before this body and I informed this body that there was a legal binding agreement.
Yeah, so that's gonna be option four.
I understand that.
Recommendation four.
That's item eight. I'm speaking as a citizen about this right here. I don't see how a learned group of individuals has come forth and put forward two things for the warrant that are going to be voted on that clearly by the, uh, memo put forth by the Commons Review Committee, um, which was circulating around. Both of those result in the Oddfellows being removed from their deeded place on the second.
Correct. It's incorrect.
Well, I mean, that's right here. I'll read it to you. It says, option one, adaptive reuse, mixed-use assembly residential upper floor, fifty-five Anornia Senior Affordable Rental Apartments. That's option one. Option two, upper floor, multipurpose community space, makers, boycotts.
I, 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 I got it. I.
I mean, it's right there clear.
What else?
So I've informed this board and I don't understand why, knowing that there's a binding agreement in place, why this is being advanced to the financial town meeting without being tabled or withdrawn, knowing that this could lead to further expense to the taxpayers in which they're gonna have to defend this contract.
Is there anything else you want to add? Good, thank you. We're on two, planner. Anything you want to want to talk about? Recommendation two.
I think we're on three.
Am I on three? You have to come up, uh, okay. I'm trying to stay on point here. I'm trying. I'm trying.
Ms. Talbot. Is it Mrs. Talbot?
Yes.
Um, I would just want to make sure, because I know everybody else. Um, you said whatever it is. My question is, what is it that you plan that maybe the rest of us are not comfortable in? And you've got things going out for the town financial meeting. That money identified as your it or our it, and I think we need to understand that so that we can all come together. I have an organization right now, there's five thousand members of the state of Rhode Island. They're Democrat, Republicans, unaffiliated and independent people, all working on the same project. Little Compton is not defined by politics. We are defined by a group of people coming together to work. I moved here fifty-some years ago because of that, that being. So for us to move forward, please define it as you understand it now so that we are more comfortable with what you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh.
Number two, how come you're not including recommended process? Why did, why are you just doing the first four and not the fifth? Because I think the fifth gives us more of a feeling that we're defining it as something that the community wants versus it as individuals want. So if we could clear that up, I really would appreciate.
Thank you. So you want, you want to answer the if?
Sure, it was best I can. So, thank you for your question. Um, so when I said it, it's because we don't have an actual plan. Any plans that have been, that you've seen have been feasibility studies that show what it, what we could possibly do? Feasibility, excuse me, that, finish. I, sorry, can I finish?
You're good.
Thanks. Okay, so we have two scenarios that we put forward. One is partnering with Church Community Housing to create shared community space there and some units of affordable housing. And that, and that scenario wouldn't cost the taxpayers anything or much of anything. We'd only be contributing some to the, uh, to the seniors. The, when we're talking about the second scenario, the bond borrowing the money, which we've identified or suggested as one point five million, that's to restore those buildings based on the capital needs assessment that we had done, what was, what it's gonna take to bring those buildings up to snuff, not to really change their use, but just to build, bring those buildings back up to stuff so that we can continue to use them and so that the fire marshal approves their, their continued use. So that's what the one point five is. It doesn't recreate things or, or make new, new, uh, new senior center in the fire barn, as has been suggested, I think, and is a great suggestion. It doesn't do that. It just gives us money to bring those buildings up to snuff. If we want to get more creative and turn the fire barn into a senior center or do, you know, other more expansive changes of use, it's gonna cost more than one point five million dollars, which is, I think, maybe where grant monies come in and partnership with the community center could come in. Um, I think there's some really nice opportunities for that, including donations from the community. So when I say there's no it, it's because I personally don't have a plan. There isn't a plan. There is proposed scenarios, but we just had to see, would this work? Could we possibly do something like this? And, and we started showing the work that we were doing in these meetings so that everybody could see what we were working on and we could be very transparent about it. I know it's difficult to watch process play out, but that's important to me in terms of transparency and, and being really clear with, with the constituents. So it has been probably confusing and I get that. Um, hopefully we're getting closer to some understanding. But to my mind, the, the bond option is to borrow money to fix up those buildings and get them so that we can use them fully again. If we want to get more creative than that, it's gonna take more money. And that's where I hope we could partner maybe with the community center, with some philanthropic folks in town, some grant monies, et cetera.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on to recommendation three. Engage with nonprofits such as Oddfellows, the Grange, LC Makers, that utilize thirty-two times to hire grant writers, secure grant funding, supply for planning. Um, another great recommendation. Um, I don't know if anyone remembers the name of Tim Jacobs. The council hired Tim Jacobs for nine thousand dollars to do the senior survey. She's very accomplished, uh, and a great, uh, grant writer, renowned grant writer. I've talked with Tim Jacobs, uh, months ago about coming on board, uh, and being our grant writer. And it wasn't cheap to hire, for sure. Um, so great suggestion. Uh, you know, you need a professional grant writer. You just can't have somebody throw a grant together. I think we all understand that. So that's a good suggestion. Anyone want to comment on grant writer recommendation three? Oh, sorry, yeah, thank you.
You're saying you're gonna pay the grant, please?
Gonna pay the grant writer?
Well, it's a recommendation.
Okay.
It's a recommendation to, uh, you're gonna have to, uh, what's that?
All right, okay. Don't most grant writers take a percentage of the grant? So we don't pay them, we take, they pay a percentage of the grant to them.
Okay.
Isn't that correct?
I've never hired a grant writer.
Okay, I'm, I'm just.
Recommendation.
Yes, because.
Recommendation is.
It's just take a percentage.
Recommendation is to hire a grant writer. That's what I have.
Right, thank you.
Four, uh, the fourth and last recommendation, review, update and honor artistic community contracts with Oddfellows and Grange, uh, during interim planning process. Blister, would you give us an update on, on that?
Well, uh, you know, you have a later on in the agenda, uh, a letter from, uh, Secana Lodge Thirty-two, and I responded to that. I can say that I've met with representatives of the lodge and also the Grand Lodge for the state of Rhode Island to discuss some of these issues. And I would say, and I have another letter about the Grange. But, uh, the Grange gets to, um, be in the building because of a vote by the town council in, uh, two thousand and two. And it says, notwithstanding section, uh, eight, uh, uh, C of the agreement between the town of Little Compton and the Independent Order of Oddfellows, Secana Lodge number thirty-nine, uh, dated August first, nineteen eighty-five, the town council has no objection to the use of the second floor of said building by the Little Compton Grange. Uh, such use will be joint with the needs of the Independent Order of Oddfellows, Secana Lodge number thirty-nine. That's a no objection letter. At best, it's a license. It's not an agreement. I'm assuming that there's an agreement between, uh, the, uh, IOOF in the Grange, although I don't know that because I haven't seen it and that's not something that would involve the town, uh, because of this letter. So I hope to continue on, uh, with my discussions, as I've said before publicly, uh, and also to the, uh, the representatives for the, uh, Secana Lodge and the state lodge. The agreement's forty years old and should be updated. There's been changes in the law since then uh, that should be reflected in the agreement that would be to the benefit, uh, not only of the town, but also for the lodge. I, I, uh, have attempted to get ahold of the attorney. I'll keep doing that and hopefully that will, uh, continue on.
Thank you. I'll move on to B. received a letter from Hinkley Island Law Firm.
I just, on this, you know, the committee met six, had six meetings, probably forty and fifteen to twenty hours. I'd just like to, for, uh, these people here on this subject, I'd just like to read the recommended process, just go through it. Once I get through it, you can have a comment. But recommended process by the committee was appoint a working long-term committee, as stated in number two of the committee, similar to the Commons Review Committee, to develop the concept of a community campus with key stakeholders in consultation to fully integrate thirty, thirty-two and thirty, uh, thirty-two and thirty-four commons in the fire bond, steward planning, public engagement and grant application. Number two, develop a plan that includes senior, youth, arts and cultural centers, spaces for Oddfellows, Grange, PTO, LC makers, stay-at-home and others, and expansion of community functions plus a senior director space. Expand the community center kitchen and lunch, lunch program, offices and meeting spaces. A formal needs assessment and architectural feasibility study following concept development by the committee. Raise funds via grants by nonprofit, supplemented by private fundraising, and then consider a bond or other town financing for the remaining cost to complete the project. Play a plan and funding for relocating the town maintenance facility, which is currently at the fire bond. And that was so that we could hopefully put it, some offices in there and a senior center in the front of it. And there's still a page and a half to go on this of the recommendations. And I would suggest everybody go to the website and read this because it's, there's a lot of knowledge in here. It was a lot of time spent. We heard from quite a few people at all these meetings to get the gist of how the town wanted those, uh, buildings to go forward. And thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Beginning tomorrow, because it's not up there now.
All right, I'm gonna move on. Saying that, I'm gonna move on. To, invited, stuck goodbye to the apple, sure, go ahead.
If I may suggest, because I heard a few comments from the audience about Articles Four and Five, which are still brewing. If for a moment we can put that four and five away from our mind and continue with your it, I'm helping you. I am. Because the it in my mind is what the committee has proposed. And then we can move on with our lives and have a better place to live with, again, I'm putting myself out there, don't cop any, with significantly less cost to the town and the town to something they can be proud of when the day is done, to meet everyone's needs. Everyone is a big word, but I'll take that back. Most people needs. And I think that may be a good way to start thinking about this. Okay, we exercise with, you know, options one and two, Articles Four and Five, and we're up to a new chapter. Let's embrace it and move forward.
I'll look at that. Look at that.
Thank you. You've only got a few seconds left.
A while before. So I think that's an opportunity for all of us to do that. And of course, that's not my decision to make. It's your decision to make. Uh, I'll stop there, I think.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, B, receiving a letter from Hinkley Island Law Firm on behalf of Secana Lodge number thirty-nine, Independent Order of Oddfellows Concerning Lease Auctions, Rights of Thirty-two Commons Little Compton. Need to make a motion to accept that letter. On favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, aye, letter response to Hinkley Island Law Firm, the town solicitor concerning the letter on one B. Again, I'll accept, make a motion to accept that letter.
Send it.
All favor?
Aye.
C, letter from Little Compton Grange, number thirty-two, want to L W L, ask the council to honor its agreement on January twelfth, nineteen eighty-seventh with the Grange, number thirty-two. I think you sort of spoke about this. Uh, I will make a motion to accept that letter. So a second. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to dissolve the Commons Review Committee as they've completed their charge. Uh, do I have a motion? Second?
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Very.
Thank everybody. I, I'd like to thank everybody that was on that committee. Everybody was very dedicated. Everybody was open and listened to everybody else's comments. And I think we came up with a very good review and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Two?
All favor?
All favor?
Aye. Aye.
Recommendation for the Recreation Committee concerning the tennis slash football court project. Need for authorization from the town to file by May ninth, twenty twenty-five, or hearing on June eighteen, twenty twenty-five. An application for special use permit for the outdoor lighting of the tennis football court, his own border view. Additionally, receiving a preliminary schedule for this project as created by Activitas. I will make the motion, I will recommend, uh, to, uh, motion of filing, uh, on the zoning application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I see no, I thought that we were gonna wait on the lighting on this, and I see no financial aspect to this. So if this gets approved by zoning, are they gonna come back to us for the money?
I have a couple of people that are very involved in this. One is Carol Wardell.
Okay.
Listener? I spoke many, many minutes about this. Would you like to answer that question?
My, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is they want to see without the lighting.
Okay.
And get the, uh, uh, courts approved.
Okay.
And at such time as they determine, uh, what's the best type of lighting. Then they would go forward on that. At issue is, um, how tall the, uh, uh, lighting should be and what type of lighting there is. The question that I had was whether or not, uh, the, um, proposals that they had had followed, uh, state and bidding requirement. And my question was the same as yours. Well, how much would it cost? Because that determines what type of bidding there would be. I think the, uh, committee has elected to go forward, get the tennis courts approved, and then, uh, come back to see what, uh, they need to do to get, uh, lighting there in the night time. Is that correct, Carol?
Yes, all, except I would add that there are really two different levels of life. One that is massive and two that are much smaller and, and regulated by height better. So they are proposing the zoning application to be considering in the future one of the two lesser, uh, light bulbs.
Yes.
Not, not the massive ones that can be seen on the plate. Not, not the massive ones that can be seen on the place.
What is the urgency of the special use permit, given the fact that we don't know yet what we're specifically going to ask for? Wouldn't zoning board need to have some detail as to how high the lights are and their illumination, that sort of thing? Is there, is there a reason why this needs to happen now? I, I just don't see the urgency behind achieving a special use permit.
That seems like a Carol answer.
Yeah. The board needed to determine which types of light they wanted to go with because the application for the special use permit for the zoning board needs to know what type of infrastructure would be underneath the tennis court before they could go for that request. And that's why they preliminarily decided they'll definitely not use the large lights. They will use one of the two other types of options. And both of those infrastructure would be the same. So when they go out to bid after approval, get approval for lights, they don't need to change the infrastructure that's going to happen underneath. On top of that, they need to have it done by the conclusion, I believe, of the May zoning board hearing. Otherwise, they miss their window of opportunity for working this summer.
Well said.
Agreed, but the, the appeal to the zoning board will be for a special use permit that is designed to accommodate what we'll call more minimal or reduced lighting as opposed to more higher lighting, whatever, whatever term it is. I, I just, I, I just fail to see the urgency in this. What difference does it make whether we have zoning board approval yet for that? We're, we're moving forward with installing pickleball courts. We're ultimately going to put underground power to them. We're not going to put in power that is going to be able to illuminate large lanterns. We're going to, it's going to be less than that. So why is the special use permit's origin? I, I'm, I'm just asking, I don't know why we're focusing on this particular issue.
Because they want to get it built this season.
But we don't know yet whether we have the funding to do that, isn't that correct? Not, not, not to.
Another Carol answer.
I, there are some out there that won't like my answer, but I have to agree with you. I don't know that we know that they have the sufficiency of the funds that they need in order to actually do installation.
Let me use the converse then, suppose we, the council, say yes, proceed. It is possible that they will be before the zoning board with an appeal for a special use permit, which is in some fashion or another not complete or needs to be changed or whatever, meaning they'd have to go back again and do it over again. Is that, is that in essence?
They may have to modify the special use permit that would require another visit to the planning board.
I, I just, it appears to me the cart is to bore the horse, but.
I have two rec members here, would they like to speak?
I, just, just. I'm not sure which one of these proposals, and I think you know which one is going to go forward. I got one from Activitas that, that this is the one they're going to use to go in front of the zoning board. And then I got this one today that says considerably less expensive, no lower pole height, we're concerned of zoning approval or whatnot. So this one seems like it would be more adequate of saving the town some money, so.
This is what the rec committee themselves drafted to give to you, what they meant to send it last week.
Okay.
And the Activitas is, is their version of verbiage.
Okay.
The one that was in your elect team is from the committee themselves.
So which one's going to go in front of the zoning board, or just this one?
No.
Oh.
No.
Well, it's got the picture in the front of it, the one that should be.
State your name, sir. State your name.
Oh, John Larue.
Do we just say you're bona fides, I like to.
I'm the new guy in the recreation committee.
I like to state you're bona fides, though, probably. One of five people in the country that is a certified, thinks in the country.
That do what I do.
Big round expert.
Yeah.
Just like to say, just like to say, there you go.
I'm also a new member of the recreation of the.
New inspector, speak right here, into the microphone.
I'm a new member of the recreation of the.
Community center.
Of the community center, I want to learn how to play major, whatever the hell that is. Isaiah. Okay. Um, we, we've really looked at these lights quite a bit. And the idea is, we, the first set of lights we looked at were really tall, were wicked bright, were like professional grade, very expensive. Absolutely tabled that, mostly also because the footing for those special lights were specialized. When we want to put the footings in, when we do the courts, we would then be married into only being able to use that one company. And we're like, well, we don't think so. So we looked at other companies and we found a couple that do recreation-based lighting. The one thing we were very careful about is to make sure that we didn't have too little light because we don't want to be tripping and falling. There are recreation standards for tennis and pickleball lighting. Um, we looked at a, a company that was going to give us four lights that were going to be thirty feet tall. Um, and we looked at another company that were going to give us six lights that were twenty-six feet tall. And we studied the, um, the amount of light that went on the court, but also the amount of light that went outside the court and the amount of light that went up. Um, so we're really into the light pollution thing. Um, Activitas, the, uh, the architect is working on the, um, a proposal and some design specs, performance standards for the lighting company that we selected, they're going to be select, giving that to the planning board, I think on May eighth or ninth or something?
Oh, zoning board.
So, the zoning board on May eighth or ninth. And what they are going to give, the big thing is the light splash. That's the thing I think these people are concerned about. Um, so the lighting has been discussed quite a bit. We want the footings to go in when the courts go in because that way we don't have to disturb any type of drainage and any type of infrastructure on the, on the, and that, and that's what I, that's what I understood to be the significance of trying to, and I don't want to say rush through, but to get this in front of the zoning board because obviously when the courts are made, you want to have footings for those lights put in at the same time the courts are made, I would assume. And the footings that would go in would be a generic footing.
Aye.
Based on, and that they would be going out to bed and with established performance standards.
Well, sir, so in other words, the application will be not only for the tennis courts, but also for light structure.
Not the light structure, but the light, the footing.
Just the footing.
Just the footings for the actual.
Zoning board's going to want to know what the height is.
They're, they're going to get all that.
Okay, you're just not going to be able to tell them what type of light you're going to put out.
No, we're going to tell them the performance standard that we would like. The amount of the heights, the shape, the size, the number of lights, the amount of lumens, what the splash is on the court, this water, the splash for the light outside the court and the lighting goes up. We don't specify a particular company, it would be a performance standard.
Okay, the zoning board just has dried beef, going to have to answer a lot of questions. All right, let's still, I'm going to stay here with the council staff for a second.
Sure.
Anything else from the council? No, I'll make motion on the table, I have a second. I'm going to give you one minute, one minute up there on discussion, go ahead. Go ahead. We have to move my head on up there.
Yeah, go to get up again. We're going to have everything that's civil in this motion, correct? In other words, all underground conduit, dry footings, everything, so nothing's touched afterwards.
That's correct, that's my understanding.
Okay, so they're not digging it up again.
No digging, no digging twice.
All right.
Thank you. I have motion, I have a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll see any, thank you. Update from the town solicitor on the town landing, boy, it seems like this is taking even tonight, right? Um, listener. So, update on the town, I do, yes, I mean, so celebrated a birthday since this, since we started this, actually a couple, but a couple. The, um, at issue is a so-called restrictive easement on this town landing that's held by the DEM. And the question is, is whether or not that restrictive easement can be removed so that the town could have full control over the property. And, uh, you know, DEM, uh, they have their rules and regulations, I've spoken with their attorneys, not only Mary Kay, who's the chief legal counsel, but also deputies, there's actually six lawyers, uh, in the DEM, uh, legal office now. So, uh, the question that is, is what, uh, what can happen? The drop-back proposal I had was that certain, um, spots be reserved for Little Compton residents. The answer was no. Uh, the question is, is that a hard no? That was a hard no. Uh, what DEM can do on this is if the town was willing to swap, so to speak, a property of similar recreational and scenic value for this one, which I, I don't think is, is possible, given, given the unique um, characteristics of the town landing. The final thing, and I got this one concession, which I have to talk to you about, is under the rules, section, uh, seven point seven, that's two fifty dash R I C R dash one ten dash zero zero dash seven point seven F. Uh, there is a clause, they had to concede, with approval of the department, project sponsors may impose reasonable limits on the type and extent of use of areas and facilities acquired or developed with this fund when such a limitation is necessary for the maintenance or preservation of the property. And I would suggest that, um, if the council is willing to pursue it, uh, that we petition DEM uh, to have some regulations there when the town landing gets maximum use, which is when surfs up. Apparently, there's some type of a surfers app that makes it so that there are times in the year when the property is overloaded. And to me, there are definite concerns as to safety, uh, as well as the preservation of this unique, um, property.
So after all that said, exactly what does all of that mean? What can we do?
Well, I, I want you to, um, if you want to, you might not want to do anything, but if you do, uh, allow me to prepare a petition for your approval, uh, that would go to DEM uh, for regulations on that property to make sure that, uh, there is adequate safety measures taken uh, when there is maximum use on this property as well as, uh, other measures at that maximum use so that the property is protected and not damaged.
I think we may wish to use the fact that access to it is via easement over private property. And those easements that we have ensure that we can get there, that anybody can get there. But specifically, it would be important that, that we have the ability, for example, to limit or do something about parking associated with access to the, the site since we have no other way in other than across an easement between adjacent property. That might be, that might be something that appeals to the, the specific site.
That's correct, and you know, overloading the area, which happens at certain times of the year, uh, is not good for the property itself. And by the way, that's the reason for the project in the first place, because you had some issues with erosion and things of that nature. Um, Miss, would you like to come up to the podium?
Be my pleasure. Um, Bonnie Cenny, um, my question would be, is there any way legally to restrict Massachusetts cars and stick with Rhode Island cars? Because is it the DEM of Rhode Island? So I don't know.
Yeah, I try that, but, uh, you know, the, uh, um, the source of the funding was from the federal government, so it's got to be, they can't have any restrictions at all.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bonnie, any, any, you guys process this a little bit, you want to come on up?
I just want to know where it might take us, like if you take this next step, like what, what would you be hoping to achieve upon?
Well, uh, I'm hoping actually to get some ideas as to restrictions, uh, from those in the area and, and major users from the local community. Uh, for what type of measure should be taken with the DEM, I think that's appropriate. Not so sure you want to just leave me to my own devices. Do you mean? Hi.
Hi.
Sure.
So my name's Sue Hudson, and I live down on Grange Avenue. I have a circular driveway and I have a neighbor who lives in the back who uses part of that. I get a lot of lost people coming into my driveway trying to find the town landing. Sometimes there are these really sweet people that are driving an older lady down so that she can see the ocean on a nice deck or things like that. So it's, um, I don't want to see so many restrictions because people like that who live here, who get somebody to drive them that can't really remember how to get there, um, should be able to go. And one day when I was walking last year, this car was coming by me and someone said, wow, I haven't been here in fifty years, what happened to this town land? And a lot of that erosion stuff really came from kids with those big wheel things making a lot of noise in the night. But you've corrected that with the way set it up, it's harder for them to get in. But I don't want to see so many restrictions that, you know, people that we all think don't go there, do go there and to be able to be part of it. And plus, you know what, we don't really want to pay for a lawsuit if we get sued like what happened in Florida or the West Coast for access when it was left open to all.
Thank you, thank you.
Because we need to put the money in the other stuff.
Thank you. Someone want to, do you want to come up? Do you?
Uh, my name's David Rockerman and been kind of involved in this for, I don't know, how long? Wow. Um, and yeah, I, I think the, with the other issues on the agenda tonight, the, the real concern was more the process and how this played out where there was, it was a gift to the town that specified it was for the community. And before this effort to, there were major erosion problems, we're not going to go through it all again, but there was a committee that was put together to try to solve the erosion problems. Before that new hardscaped parking area was there, there was never a problem with access because anybody and everybody could park there, like it never fully filled up. And then we, we took a grant and dramatically reduced the parking. And then people who live in the community, and you know, in the will, it's as if it's for the people of the community. And, you know, in the, in the Secana times, I've, I feel like I've been, I'm like the, like, we love a good drama with like, oh, it's coastal access and they want to take this away. And it's just, it's really more that it's a beautiful community space. And I think it's kind of related to the conversation about the building, that it's precious when you have a space for community to get together. And I think we're, I think we need to shift the focus from it's a problem a few times a year with a big swell event. You can go there on a beautiful day and it can be difficult to park. We keep referring to it like it's this, like we're going to stand still in time and like there's not, you know, a million people that are, you know, broadcasting this. And that's all fine, like people have, everybody's always enjoyed it from the outside too, but now it's difficult to get in. So, you know, and, and the, the major issue here was that we, we had a town ordinance that said, in accordance with will, that it was for residents only, and then we took an eighty thousand dollar grant that we removed our ability to decide what we do with the space. And so the, the real problem is, you know, for, for all of us who are working full-time or who have kids or out there, we put our faith in all of you to do your due diligence, and that ordinance was not included in that grant application. And it would have disqualified us. So it's not about trying to stop people from getting in, it's that there was a problem in the way it's done. And me personally, I've just been trying to see that process through that says, hey, it wasn't ours to say, we're giving this to the state to make decisions about how this is overseen. That is what happened through the grant. And so I think even if it's, I mean, I don't want to say even if it's going forward for other things, other projects, because, you know, yeah, we've been at this for a couple of years to just say, even if it just came back to the town and then we said, okay, well, let's talk about. You know, yeah, we've been at this for a couple of years to just say, even if it just came back to the town and then we said, okay, well, let's talk about. Like what does the will say? Or do we want this to be open to everybody? We, we can talk about all those things as a town, but to just give that up to the state for. Eighty thousand dollars. I mean, it's like a little laughable saying like, you know. Can we just trade it out for another property of equal scenic value? I mean, that's the thing. It was this really special place and. We just signed it off. So I don't know, like, I don't, I don't know where we might get with this. I, I hope. Maybe something that would just allow, like, the concern has been, can the community still, even if other people too? Sure, yes, but. Can the community access it? And that's been the, that's been the problem. When there were no restrictions, none of us were here coming saying. We need accents because everybody could go, but now you can't. So.
Thank you.
That's the brief history.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm interested to hear what you can come up with.
Thank you. Here's the thing. And you just, that the grant, great data.
Right, I know, I know, yeah.
The question is, is, uh, him, you know, ring the bell? And I've been trying for a couple of years.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And ring the bell. They won't, they won't take the eighty thousand dollars back, listener. Then we already tried that.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Working, yeah. So this is where we're at.
Okay, yeah. I would love to talk with you more about it if, 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 if an opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else on this issue? Thank you. Okay.
I'd allow the solicitor to go forward.
You have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll, uh. Solicitor to go forward with, uh. Whatever legal easy you stand. That's a go.
And then we'll put that on the agenda. We can get public input on, uh, marking it up.
Let's go back to the council. If you've got some kind of.
Right, and, and, and actually prefer to meet with the interested parties. Guys, before having it come here.
Right, sure.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
All in favor?
Aye, aye, thank you. Four, update on paving project that was done. I don't know why it's in here, but probably my fault. But we won't have to, to four. Five, memo from the solicitor on process of designate scenic highways in Little Compton. I'm happy to accept this memo and assign it to Andrew Moore in his absence.
Second.
Second, and we have a discussion.
I have one thing to add to that, and thank you for the, the memo. Um. And in the memo, I just saw it, it mentions, um, the road of, around the commons as being the proposed, um, scenic. Um, roadway.
I talked to you guys.
Well, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we still had the ability to look at other roads, consider West Main Road and maybe others as part of this as, as we move forward.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure that that was, that it wasn't a finite, you know, uh, look.
I have a motion, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'm motioning a second, second.
More discussion. Miss, would you like to approach?
Jennifer Flather, um, because all of us didn't get all the paperwork, can you explain to us a little bit more? Unless I'm the only one who didn't read it. What is the scenic highway thing? And could you stand here when you do? Cause you talked to them and we can't hear you.
Oh, I'll come right up.
Thanks.
I saw the state of Rhode Island, uh, has a, uh, a program. They call it scenic highways, although the, um. Rules and regulations refer to it as scenic roadways. There are nine in the state. And the, the purpose of it under section twenty four dash fifteen one. Is that in order to create and preserve rustic and scenic highways for vehicular, bicycle and pedestrian travel. In un, unhurried, quiet and leisurely enjoyment. And to protect and preserve recreational driving, culture, beauty, trees, vegetation. Shoreline and wildlife by establishing protective standards for scenic highways. Uh, design, speed, maintenance and identification. Uh, the, uh, uh, this system was created. There is a board for this.
Right, okay.
And, uh, what you do is, uh, the town would, uh, the town council. Uh, would file an application with the, uh, scenic roadways board. To have the commons, uh, designated as a, as a scenic highway or roadway. And that could be any one of the streets that you have, that'd be a determination. That would give you some more control over the signage and things of that nature. Um, that, you know, I've, I've been involved in, uh, getting these things approved. I, I can't think of, you know, based on what you heard earlier in the meeting. A better candidate, uh, for that type of preservation than this area right here. So it seems tailor made for it. Uh, because it, the, the comments here is a state road. Um.
I have one question for you.
Wait, I'm not done. Wait, uh, wait, wait. Um.
So it's not the way.
I know, my head is not there, but, um. Uh, this is a, the state road, so the first step would be to, um, notify the, uh. Ride out directive that you're going to make this application. And then after that, um, you apply to the state board. They would have a public hearing. That public hearing would be down here so the public could get a chance to comment, uh, on it. And, uh, you'd go from there. Uh, this is a program, Sal. So it allows you, uh, the town to, uh, do certain things with it to preserve. The scenic characteristics of the, uh, roadway. Uh, we thought about that, uh, at the last meeting because of, with the, uh. Over signage of the area. This would allow you to, uh, to handle that. Uh, on it and, um.
So the town would be still in control of the area?
I, I, the, the best way for me to describe it is. Is, uh, the, uh, uh, state roadways, uh, board is the, uh, car and the town's the driver.
Hmm.
So I guess it's a, it's something to consider. The communities have done it, they like it. Uh, so that's why I did the memo. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have a, um, oh, would you like to come up again? Oh my God, right, come on up.
Where you just referenced the, oh, sorry, Peg Boggar. Um, where you referenced ride off. And making south of the common. Phoenix road. Could you ask them to please put lineage? The side of the road? I've already seen three cars go into the ditch that they dug up. And they have no lines on the sides. You have people coming as scenic driving. They're not going to be twenty and thirty years. They're older, which means they're more liable to go into the ditch. That are even deeper now, so you can't drive out of it. So, A, they have that big, and B, I have talked to several people in town that want to know. Put that, the lines. In the commons going side. Why did they take away parking? So. You're talking about Phoenix, we don't have park. It, it's all messed up now. You can't park on the side of the library. But I'm more concerned people are going to come here. And they're going to go in a ditch south of the commons. So it's just a real sincere concern to me.
Thank you.
I don't want to see people hurt. Beautiful town.
I have a motion. And a second on the table. Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, can you post? No, thank you. New business. FY twenty six, twenty seven, this is a solid waste recycling service agreement in Rhode Island. Resource recovery corporation, the town of Little Compton. Consider authorization to execute the agreement. I'm going to make a motion to. Ex, authorize to execute the agreement. So a second.
Okay, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
I'm going to hand this one off. You got, you're gonna have to read it too, because I've been a lot of talk.
I'll read it.
Uh, because you are, uh, you did some work on this.
I did, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So new business number two, request from Robert Harvey, scout master of troop twenty, Little Compton. And vice president, the Scout Association of Little Compton. Requesting legal assistance for the Little Compton Scouts regarding an attempt of the Narragansett Council. Scout Association Council to declare the land in Little Compton owned by the scouts as abandoned. Um, I haven't spoken directly with Mr. Harvey on this, but I have spoken with Mr. Katie about this. And briefly with the solicitor. Um, it appears that the Narragansett Council is, is attempting to basically. Uh, hope that the, the troop would default and, um, and that they would be able to. Take the land and sell it. Um, this is land that the scouts use actively for camping. Um, I personally am a huge proponent of scouting. I think. Wonderful. I'm a former, uh, Brownie Girl Scouting Cadet. So, um, so I'm very much in favor of us trying to help the scouts in this situation. There's a deadline on this of tomorrow, actually. So it's a very tight turnaround that they're looking for some help. Um, so I would like to, uh, make a motion to authorize the solicitor to do the preliminary work required. To prevent troop twenty from defaulting and that entails entering an appearance, answering a call. And giving analysis back to the council.
I'm happy to second that. Would you like to comment? Uh, yeah, the, the, uh, the plan, uh, for the, uh, uh, Narragansett Council, which is the state organization for the scouts. Uh, is to, I think they're assuming. Uh, that, uh, uh, no one from Little Compton would answer this case. Uh, the default would enter. And then the next plan is to appoint a receiver that would be allowed to sell the property. And have the proceeds go to, um. The Narragansett Council. I did have a chance to discuss, uh, with these gentlemen, uh, the fact that the, uh. Property is in use, it's open space. Uh, juice for scouting, uh, the troop is active. So, uh, uh, at the very least, I think the case should be answered so that, uh. The local, uh, Little Compton troop, uh, can have a chance to make its pitch in court.
Especially since the charge is that the, that the property's been abandoned.
That's correct, yes.
From the truth, it's not abandoned. In use.
And if they're taking advantage of a legal maneuver. And, uh, the property owner was a corporation. Which charter has lapsed. But that doesn't mean that it's not being used. Court needs to know that.
So you're gonna, when, when you say this is for tomorrow?
Yes.
You have to go to court tomorrow on this or just file a brief?
Need to file an answer to the case.
So you'll do that.
Mr. Hartman says he won't go home until it's, uh.
I can tell you where he lives, because I know where he lives.
Uh, ju- just for the record, it's troop twenty nine.
Oh, twenty nine, I'm sorry. Carol, can you?
Just for the record, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, I have a motion, I have a second. For the Boy Scouts. All in favor?
For the solicitor to answer the.
Okay, you.
And to come back to us, correct, solicitor? You would come back to us with an analogy after you've done the.
That's correct, yes.
Yes.
Uh, to authorize the solicitor to. Oh, hang on. Um. To work to prevent the loss of land of the Little Compton Scouts troop number twenty nine. By entering an appearance. Answering a call and giving an analysis to the town council.
That's what I thought I heard.
Is that, is that enough of a motion for you to authorize you to go forward with a, uh, response?
Correct, yes. We'll file that tomorrow. Uh, we'll, um. Reach out to the other side on this case, let them know what they were going in, and I'll let you know, um, how, how hard they want to fight on this thing.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? I'll see you. Thank you. Receive letters of resignation for the following. Amy Gallinelli, Finance Director, effective June thirtieth. Did I skip something? Somebody, all right. I just hear chat, didn't I? Receive letters of resignation from the following. Amy Gallinelli, Finance Director, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, Amy. Has been with us a year, uh, April. Uh, I accept that with regret. Um, it's a bright future for her. She's a very nice, nice woman and, and a professional. I wish her the best. She had some great candy at her desk, which I will miss. Um, so. I wish her all the best. Um. But I have a motion.
Uh, a motion, well, you made the motion, didn't you?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. B. Uh, to, um. Regrettably accept Tony Texer, Town Administrators. Resignation effective June twenty, twenty three.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
Twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five. Um, so Tony, I've worked with now. Been on the council almost four years. Uh. Some things I wrote down. Tony is a, he's also a professional. Uh, a respectful man. Um, a positive guy. Uh, and more importantly, uh, to me, he's a gentleman. And really more importantly, he puts family first. Uh, with his, uh, six children and nine grandchildren. Uh, so. I know you're going to spend a lot of time with them. I know that's important to you. Uh, and I wish you all the best. Uh, you're always welcome in Little Compton. Uh, I consider you a friend. And I'm better off to have known you. Uh, and thank you for your, uh, your attitude. Uh. Everything you've done, Little Compton. Thanks.
Right, good.
Yeah, I'm most high. Have a motion. To accept the resignation, regretfully, to have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And then I have a question, could you skip over?
Uh, no, did I?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go I.
Oh, well, you're supposed to do that after three A, but okay.
You're right. Hold on back. I'm gonna go back to I under A. And consider and act upon appointing an interim finance director. An efficient transition. I like to make the motion to appoint John McAve as the interim finance director. One second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. B, uh, B, is it B I? Is that what it is? These, these letters? B I? Consider and act upon advertising, seek applications and resumes to fill the vacancy. With eligibility standards that set forth. The Little Compton Town Code, section two dash two point four. The Little Compton Home will chart section six oh one. Do you have a motion?
I'm more that we have those.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Four, new business, cool request from the budget committee. The council changed the date of the annual financial town meeting. Some date in June. Consider the third week in June sixteen through twenty, depending on availability. School, gymnasium, we have that information as June seventeenth. Uh, I will make.
Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday. Uh, I will make that motion to switch the date to June seventeenth, the top financial meeting. One second. And any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
There's some. Women out there still arguing with the parents.
Would you like to come up to the podium? So everyone's here. There's people that watch on, um, live stream that. Really send me nasty texts when I allow that. And, uh.
So doesn't the school have to notify if they lay people off at June first? And if the, the sound financial meeting is after? Then they can't lay them. I'm just not saying they're going to, but.
I have not, uh, thanks, July first.
Deadline's now July first?
It's, the deadline is July first. It is, uh, acceptable to move it a month. This is under section three oh one of the charts.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't hurting the teachers.
No.
Thank you.
And that's already, uh, we've already voted on that. Thank you. Um. Got a lot of stuff on.
Aye.
Five, request for town administrator for the council authorization to sign on as we have three department head reports. Which had been negotiated by himself and the fire chief. I'd like to extend this for two weeks and put it on the next agenda. Can I, uh, I'll make that motion, one second.
I'd like to possibly amend that motion to have an executive session on that so we can discuss it. It won't be about job performance. It'd be about salary increases. So I would propose that we do it.
I don't think we did, I don't think we need a motion, but it's fine.
Well, I'll make a motion that we have an executive session on the three pay raises, um. Before the now, next council meeting at six P M.
So I've made a motion to extend it for two weeks. And I will include an executive session on the matter. Of so.
At six o'clock.
At six o'clock.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Order, sitting as a board of licenses and commissions. Request from Little Compton Game Club for a class F one, one day retail beverage license for surf, interriff dinner. To be held May twenty third, twenty twenty five on John Dyer Road facility.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Victoria, I see your name on here. You've been doing some more work in your, in your time?
Uh huh.
So I'll let you read it then.
Okay, item two. Request for twelve class F one day retail beverage licenses. Received from Charles Canane, doing business as the Village Green LLC. A seasonal outdoor community space located at twenty two Main Street. Said licenses for each weekend, Friday and Saturday. As a month, May through October. Proposal in supporting request for entertainment license founding, communication one, and I will. The next item, which is communication item number one, which I would like to include in this conversation because it's germane. Request from Charles Canane on behalf of the Canadian Brothers. For twelve single event entertainment licenses for use at the Village Green, twenty two Main Street, Adamsville. For each weekend, Friday and Saturday, once a month, May to October. Um, I think this is, I'm excited about this idea and I think this is picking up on a theme that we.
Um, I think this is, I'm excited about this idea, and I think this is picking up on a theme that we have tonight of the precious few opportunities and spaces that we have to get together as a community and the importance of that. So I'm, uh, very much a proponent of this and excited about it and would like to, uh, make a motion that we grant the, um, F one, uh, twelve class F one-day beverage licenses, uh, subject to approval by the chief of.
Might I ask you to add, and subject to meeting all state and local requirements?
And subject to meeting all state and local requirements.
Oh, you should know that.
Hey, no, Gary, where are you? I needed you on that.
I'm going to second that motion, and, uh, we were under discussion, I'll just quickly say it. It's my understanding, uh, we have this wonderful parade show, this one in the world, right? And we've had it for a few years now, and my understanding is we have a baby that's been, um, uh, we've had a baby from that parade. People have met there, I don't know if they've got married.
Great baby.
Baby. People in town do meet and, and, and they do make families. So I think it's important that we keep that going. Am I right in saying that, Mr. Canane?
That on the record is.
That on the.
Report is just between me and you.
I think I, I would like to say this, this is a temporary idea until we get some more restaurants and towns. Thank you for, uh, stepping up to council.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm gonna follow that with a motion to also grant the entertainment license subject to the same approvals, state and local.
And that's Communications One.
Can, can I do that as a, as another motion?
It is, but recognize that they requested that instead of it be to the Canane Brothers, that it came the same name as the local license, which is.
Which is the Village.
Green LLC.
LLC, thank you, Carol.
Do you have a motion?
I think she just made.
That was, you wanna repeat it?
Um, that, uh, motion to grant the entertainment license to Village Green LLC, uh, subject to all state and local approvals.
Well, that's better.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Um. Any discussion?
Just try to keep everything cool over there, so nothing comes back. Um, um. Did you do that? Why did nobody do that? Please be courteous to the whole neighborhood, okay?
My understanding that music ends at eight, is that right? Or the whole thing's done at eight o'clock?
The whole thing's done at eight o'clock.
You're gonna go home.
Some people don't like music at five, okay?
I know. And, and it was true.
I think that they're good.
Chuck, do you want to get up and just say a few words? Because you, you've put together a pretty detailed proposal, and I think, I, I don't want people to get the idea this is like a concert series.
Oh, they're good kids, and I know their mother.
Yeah. You know where to find them.
So, uh, so this is an idea, obviously, that came out of a lack of places for people, that the community get together and eat. Uh, we're gonna keep it very simple, we're just gonna, it's all about community, it's gonna be very low-key as possible. Um, we have some great, great people involved who are gonna help us, and it won't, uh, we may do a little bit of quiet music here and there, but there'll be outdoor trivia nights, which I think everyone uh, has been really excited about. And so far, we also are gonna, you know, we've, we've gone around to a, a lot of the neighbors just to make sure that everybody's okay with this. Because we absolutely don't want to do it if it's not supported, but, um, yeah, we, and again, it'd be a temporary thing, we'd love to have a place where people can come and meet and, and, and get together and it's, you know, we don't have the funds to open a restaurant, but this, we can open a field, so we'll be in the field, in the field, believe me. I, I agree, yeah. So, thank you so much, tha- thanking for the support of the council for the, the past events. Um, yeah, we're so grateful, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Charlie.
I have a motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, thank you.
Make additions to. Request from Brenda P. Mickey, Wild Cherry Drive, for the council to consider taking over the roadway. Notice Wild Cherry Drive. Any comments from, um, my senior councilors here, I'm sure this has come these roadways, private roadways have come, folks before? I was around. Would you like to comment either to?
Sure, uh, the applicant has their hand up, perhaps she'd like to.
Aye.
Precisely, say what it is she's looking for.
Again, on Brent, Nikki, Wild Cherry Drive. I put in the request, and after review, I'd like to retract my request. Unless you can pave the road, sir. Can you add Wild Cherry to all of that?
Retracted, thank you.
Any questions for me?
On retraction, no.
Thank you.
Good question. Well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, Patrick.
That's all right, that is good to see you.
Uh, the idea is that we have five Airbnbs on our street. They are, the street is beyond repair because of all the traffic, and we have lots of traffic. If you're going to allow Airbnbs in areas that are zoned for no business, Airbnb is a zoned business, as they have state licenses, then why aren't, why isn't the town going to take care of the road? I'm, I'm just curious. I, I think it's a responsibility of the town um, to allow businesses in a non-business-directed area. And Plymouth Land Grants, as we've already shown, is such. So it falls to you. And, and if you think we don't have a lot of traffic and we don't have a lot of please sort of come down during the nights and see what's going on. South Shore Beach, South Shore Park. And that's, we get, we also get this South Shore Beach thinking it's a shop.
A shop.
But we do need help from the town.
All right, so I, I'll, the, the question, solicitor, is an Airbnb is a business? And it's residential, does the town have to pave the road? Any response to that would be?
Well, it's not on the agenda, uh, so I'm a little worried about the Open Meetings Act. However, I can tell you that, uh, uh, we are, uh, researching the issue, and we will be coming, uh, to you with a memoranda on that. Uh, all of these Airbnb issues, uh, that arise, including, uh, the roadway situation.
All right, I want to get close to any violations here, thank you.
Can I just clarify and, and confirm that that conversation is happening right now at the planning board level, and that's who you're working with up for the recommendation that then will come to the council? Is that where it sort of sits right now? Is the planning board's gonna be discussing that first, and then it'll come to the council?
My, my, my experience with this town is it, uh, it actually is a diffuse thing that we're.
Okay.
But it will come from the planning board to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I don't think there's any, uh, uh, accident on that, Carol.
Motion place on file.
There you go, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Copy resolution to adopt a verbal town council supporting House Bill H five six three four. Senate Bill S O one one four, defending affordable prescription drug laws act. Back up with that on file, Gary?
Yes, I would. Motion place on file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.